123, 75124 and 75107, G to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Designation of Available Chamorro Land Trust Commission (CLTC) Land for Commercial Use to Lease Agreement Stipulations for the Commercial Leasing of Available CLTC Land to Allowing the Sublease or Assignment of Commercial Leases to Mandate Reports and to Establish the Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund and to Prioritize the Use of Lease Proceeds for the Survey and Registration and the Construction of Infrastructure on CLTC Residential and Agricultural Properties.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon, yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass. Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Speaker Wampat, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay.
Bill Number 175-33COR received 13 yea votes and 2 nay votes. Bill Number 175-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 181-33COR.
Bill Number 181-33COR as substituted by the sponsor and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.Ciata, Frank B. Uggan Jr., V. Anthony Ada, N. B. Underwood, Ph.D., Mary Camacho Torres, T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to amend Section 3102.1 of Article 1, Chapter 3, and Section 7160E of Chapter 7, Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to waiving motor vehicle driver's license fees and motor vehicle license and registration fees for the spouses and legal guardians of 100% disabled veterans, for Gold Star widows, widowers, and parents, and for recipients of Medals of Valor and the Purple Heart Medal.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Bill Number 181-33 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 181-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 146-33COR.
Bill Number 146-33COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., Judith T. Wampat, EDD, T.Ciata, V. Anthony Ada, N. B. Underwood, Ph.D., Mary Camacho Torres, T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to add a new Section 832.1 to Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, and to repeal Section 79601.2 of Article 6 of Chapter 79, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, as enacted by Public Law 32-046 relative to the establishment of a War on Terror Fallen Heroes Monument on the Adelou Parade Field of the Ricardo J. Bordalio Governors Complex at Adelou.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Siniklis, aye.
Bill Number 146-33 received 15 yea votes. Bill Number 146-33 is duly passed into law. Bill Number 153-33LS.
Bill Number 153-33LS introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., V. Anthony Ada. An act to appropriate the sum of $25,000 from the initial savings realized in fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Public Law 33-060 to the Department of Administration for the purpose of funding the construction of the Fallen Heroes Monument to be erected by the fallen heroes of the Pacific Foundation Guam.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator Siniklis. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Speaker Wampat. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Torres, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Bill Number 153-33LS received 7 aye votes and 8 nay votes. Bill Number 153-33 failed to get the required votes to be passed, so it failed. Bill Number 154-33LS.
Bill Number 154-33LS introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to appropriate the sum of $100,000 from the initial savings realized in fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Public Law 33-060 to the Jotnyam Mayor's Office for the purposes of the repair of the Jotnyam Gym Facilities.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Torres.
Bill Number 154-33LS received 7 yea votes, 8 nay votes. Bill Number 154-33 failed. Bill Number 155-33LS.
Bill Number 155-33LS introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to appropriate the sum of $39,000 from the initial savings realized in fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Public Law 33-060 to the Talafulfo Mayor's Office for the purposes of the repair and upgrades to the Talafulfo Baseball Field.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Torres.
Bill Number 155-33LS received 7 yea votes and 8 nay votes. Bill 155-33 failed. Bill Number 156-33LS.
Bill Number 156-33LS introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., Tommy Morrison, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to appropriate the sum of $273,000 from the initial savings realized in fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Public Law 33-060 to the Department of Public Works for the repair of the Yumatic Bridge Towers.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No. No, I am.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Torres.
Bill Number 156-33LS received 7 aye votes, 8 nay votes. Bill Number 153-33 failed. Bill Number 157-33LS.
Bill Number 157-33LS introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to appropriate the sum of $150,000 from the initial savings realized in fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Public Law 33-060 to the Sinehania Mayor's Office for the completion of the open-air gymnasium, renovations and reconfiguration of the parking lot, building of a playground, and renovation of the baseball field.
Roll Call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator Torres.
Bill Number 157-33 received 7 aye votes and 8 nay votes. Bill number 157-33 received seven aye votes, eight nay votes. Bill number 157-33 failed. Bill number 26-33 COR.
Bill number 26-33 COR, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to add a new section 10315 to Article III of Chapter 10, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the online and public disclosure of medical licenses issued by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye.
Bill number 26-33 received 15 aye votes. Bill number 26-33 is duly passed. Bill number 29-33 COR.
Bill number 29-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, and further amended by the Committee on Rules, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to authorize the transfer of Lot Number 5007, Dedido Guam Estate Number 2531, to Goodwin Development Corporation in accordance with the settlement between the Government of Guam and the estate of Jose M. Torres, Civil Case Number CV1093-06.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
You have to ask.
Madam Speaker, I request that I be excused from voting on this matter due to conflicts.
And normally would ask for what reason, and then I'll ask the body whether you should be excused. There's a conflict? Okay, so...
There's a conflict of interest, and I request that I refrain from voting on this.
Okay, so I would present this to the body. Should Senator Torres then be recused from voting? Please listen, Senator, is there any objection? No objection, Senator, you are excused.
Senator Torres, excused. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 29-33 COR received 14 aye votes and one excuse. Bill number 29-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 91-33 LS.
Bill number 91-33 LS, as substituted by the sponsor of the floor and amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, an act to amend Sections 70115, 70116, and 70117 of Chapter 70, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the issuance of business licenses.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye.
I pass, you said pass.
I'm sorry, Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Bill number 91-33 received 15 aye votes. Bill number 91-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 134-33 COR.
Bill number 134-33 COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to rezone Lot Number 3257-4-2 in the municipality of Sinehania from Agricultural Zone 8 to Commercial Zone C.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 134-33 received 15 aye votes. Bill number 134-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 137-33 COR.
Bill number 137-33 COR, as substituted by the sponsor, introduced by T.C. Ada, an act to amend Section 104 of Chapter 4 of Public Law 28-68, relative to the land exchange for George Tovis to provide public access to the Ukuru High School site on an area-for-area basis and to not include the land used for a military utility easement.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 137-33 received 15 aye votes. Bill number 137-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 145-33.
Bill number 144-33 COR.
145. I don't have 44 here. Okay, bill number 144-33 COR.
Bill number 144-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication and further amended on the floor, introduced by Frank F. Blash Jr., James V. Espaldon, an act to add a new Section 4123 to Chapter 4 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing federal receipts reporting requirements.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 144-33 received 15 aye votes. Bill number 144-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 145-33 COR.
Bill number 145-33 COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to repeal and reenact Section 5126 of SubArticle C of Article II, Chapter 5, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Women, Infants, and Children Program and the Bureau of Economic Security Program of the Department of Public Health and Social Services to utilize jointer and mutual use of procurement contracts.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 145-33 COR received 15 aye votes. Bill number 145-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 76-33 COR.
Bill number 76-33 COR, as substituted by the sponsor and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to amend Section 3201.1A of Article II, Chapter 3, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the qualifications of the territorial epidemiologist of the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel. Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Espaldon, aye.
Bill number 76-33 received 13 yea votes and 2 nay votes. Bill number 76-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 164-33LS.
Bill number 164-33LS as amended by the sponsor, introduced by T.C. Adda, an act to amend Section 75105C and to add new Section 75112K and 75124 of Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated relative to authorizing the sale of bull cartels and land remnants belonging to the government of Guam and to creating the Tomorrowland Trust Survey Fund into which the proceeds from the sale of the bull cartels and land remnants shall be deposited and the authorized uses of the fund.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wamptat. Speaker Wamptat, aye.
Bill number 164-33LS received 15 yea votes. Bill number 164-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 152-33COR.
Bill number 152-33COR as substituted by the sponsor on the floor and amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, Mary Camacho Torres, B.J.F. Cruz, Frank F. Blash Jr., Brant T. McCready, Tommy Morrison, Michael F.Q. Siniklis, James V. Espaldon, R.J. Rispisho, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.C. Adda, V. Anthony Adda, Frank B. Uggan Jr., N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampet, E.D.D., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for the Guam Football Association for the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the FIFA 2018 World Cup and the AFC Asian Cup 2019.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda. Nay. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wamptat. Speaker Wamptat, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay.
Bill number 152-33 received 12 yea votes and 3 nay votes. Bill number 152-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 164-33LS. 164. 164. Well, you guys, that's the order in which you place the bills. So 166-33LS.
Bill number 166-33LS as amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to repeal and reenact Section 103120 of Chapter 103, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated and to amend subsection B and add a new subsection C of Section 15110 of Article 1, Chapter 15, Title 22 Guam Code Annotated relative to reestablishing and funding the Banking and Insurance Enforcement Fund and thereby facilitating health insurance reform practices.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wamptat. Speaker Wamptat, aye.
Bill number 166-33 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 166-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 164-33LS. Why did you guys give this to me? No, you gave me 166.
164 has 15 yes. Dearly. Bill with Senator Tom Adda. Bull Cartel.
Okay. 169-33COR. They want everybody to vote again to ensure that it passed. 169-33COR.
Bill number 169-33COR as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampet, E.D.D., N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., Michael F.Q. Siniklis, Frank F. Blash Jr., an act to amend subsections E, I, and K of Section 18 of Public Law 31-229 as repealed and reenacted by Section 2 of Public Law 31-277 and to amend the first paragraph of subsection Q and item Q1 of Section 22425 of Article 4, Chapter 22 of Title V Guam Code Annotated relative to approving interim financing and lease-back agreements between the University of Guam and the University of Guam Endowment Foundation for the construction of the Student Services Center and the Engineering Annex Facility at the University of Guam.
Thank you. And I know that in your copies you didn't have the other two and we did check and the amendment was, I did make the amendment, so, and that's why the clerks repeated it to make sure. Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wamptat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wamptat, aye.
Bill number 169-33 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 169-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 171-33COR.
Bill number 171-33COR as amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal and Migration Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District, introduced by R.J. Rispisho, an act to add a new subsection J to Section 1209 of Article 2, Chapter 1 and amend Section 68102 of Chapter 68, Title V Guam Code Annotated relative to mandating that the Bureau of Statistics and Plans collect data on the amounts and types of all produce and fish imported into Guam or actually procured or projected to be procured by government agencies with such information to be posted quarterly by types of produce and fish on both the BSP and Department of Agriculture's website.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wamptat. Speaker Wamptat, aye.
Bill number 171-33 received 15 yea votes. Wow, unanimous. Congratulations, Senator Rispisho. Bill number 171-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 174-33COR.
Bill number 174-33COR as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations and Youth Development and further amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampet, E.D.D., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., Michael F.Q. Siniklis, R.J. Rispisho, James V. Espaldon, an act to amend Section 58104 of Chapter 58, Division 5, Title V Guam Code Annotated relative to the refinancing of the government of Guam's obligation with respect to Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, Guam Public School Facilities Project Series 2006A, the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, Guam Public School Facilities Project Series 2006B, and the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, Guam Public Schools Facility Project Series 2008.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wamptat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wamptat, aye.
Bill number 174-33 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 174-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 176-33LS.
Bill number 176-33LS as amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., R.J. Rispisho, Frank B. Uggan Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to add a new item 5 to subsection O of Section 1, Chapter 5 of Public Law 33-66 relative to the classification of Department of Agriculture Personnel vital to the protection of Guam's natural resources and the appropriation of funds to the Department of Agriculture.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, nay.
Bill number one seventy-six dash thirty-three L.S. received eleven yea votes and four nay votes. Bill number one seventy-four dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number, oh, resolution number one seventy-seven dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Resolution number one seventy-seven dash thirty-three C.O.R. introduced by Michael F.Q. Siniklis. Relative to expressing illegislaturen Guam's, the Guam Legislature's support for the passage of H.R. nine, the Innovation Act, which offers a host of critical fixes to the problem of abusive patent litigation by adding transparency around patent ownership, making defending against a patent suit less prohibitively expensive and ensuring local businesses engaged in e-commerce shall not be victimized by such abusive litigation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Resolution number one seventy-seven dash thirty-three received fifteen aye votes. Resolution number one seventy-seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of Edelfrida A. Ada to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Edelfrida receive unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Nathaniel Burke, M.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiner's, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Burke receive unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Laura Lynn V. Duckinni to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Laura Lynn Duckinni is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Sharon Davis to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Sharon Davis is duly confirmed by this body by unanimous support. On the nomination of Philip J. Flores to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiner's, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Philip Flores receive unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Catherine Gale to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Catherine Gale is unanimous supported by the legislature and she is duly confirmed. On the nomination of Frank L.G. Lohan Jr. to serve as the Chief Technology Officer of the Office of Technology, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Nomination of Frank L.G. Lohan Jr. to serve as Chief Technology Officer of the Office of Technology.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Mr. Frank L.G. Lohan Jr. received fifteen yea votes, so he's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Cecilia C.A. Paris to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Cecilia Paris unanimously supported and she is confirmed by this body. On the nomination of John R. Titan to serve as a member of the Guam Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. John R. Titan receive unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. Senator Rispisho, we've exhausted everything in the voting file.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, hearing no objections, we are adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.